We're hot.
Good evening. This meeting of the Notaway County Board of Supervisors is now called to order. Mr. Hill, will you provide an invocation for us, please?
My mom, we thank you for the opportunity. We have come and carry on business in a free country.
Yes, ma'am.
It's something that a lot of people don't realize that we take advantage of. We thank you for the God that you have given us and pray that you would forgive us of our shortcomings and give us wisdom as we continue to move forward. Bless all the members of the board supervisors and be with them in the decisions they make tonight. Pray for all the citizens of this county. Continue to be with them and thankful that no one got injured during the bad weather we experienced. And we thank you for all your blessings. You continue to be with us. We continue to be best service to you. You are sent in. Pray for them.
Amen.
Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Costin, do you wish to speak to some amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, all of the members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I think most people know that when we set the agenda and put that out, it's about six days before the scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting. As we all know, that meeting last week was postponed and rescheduled for tonight, and the wheels keep on turning. So I'd like to add some things to the agenda and remove some things from the agenda. Beginning with E, public hearings, those need to be taken off of the agenda this evening. We have been advised by council that Board of Supervisors meetings when canceled, and there are zoning matters on those agendas, that the movement, the postponement of the board's meeting does not carry for the zoning items. The zoning items will have to be completely re-advertized. So those will be scheduled for February. Then you have also in I, I'd like to add number five, redistricting committee appointment. And I'll explain that when the item comes up. And then J, two, emergency declarations, plural for snow. Those are the only items we would offer as amendments to the agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the amendments introduced by Mr. Costin?
So move.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the amendments. Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
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 Any opposed, please indicate with nay. The January 20th, 22, actually, we're January, it's the 20th, 2022 agenda, but this is the reschedule because it was postponed, but the meeting agenda with amendments is approved. Minutes from the December 16, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting or in tonight's board package, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the December 16 meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please vote nay. Minutes from the December 16 board meeting are approved as presented. All right. Delegations from the public. I've got the sign-up sheet. We appreciate the public's interest in Notaway County, and we're pleased to provide this opportunity for speakers to address the board. With this being our first regular board meeting of 2022, I'd like to take a moment to share a few procedural reminders. Sign-up sheets are provided ahead of each meeting, and we ask that anyone wishing to speak register before the meeting is called to order. Each speaker is subject to a five-minute time limit. This is an opportunity for citizens to voice uninterrupted their opinions and concerns, but it's not a time to engage the board in a question-and-answer session. If board action is indicated as a result of information provided during this time, the matter may be placed on an agenda for a future board meeting. Special note for this evening, if you're here to speak to topics for which public hearings will be scheduled, you're more than welcome to do so, but you may find that your remarks on these topics will carry greater impact and be particularly relevant if you would like to reserve them for the public hearings. When your name is called, please proceed to the podium. Kristin Johnson?
Hi, I'm Kristin Johnson. I just wanted to say a few words on some matters that are going on within the county that do affect the citizens as well as the children within the county. Accountability, this is a word that has been spoken here before, and it's resulted in change, and we need to see that again. Our children need to see that, and my child needs to see that. We, as the parents of victims, are ready for change, and I told, and I hold, as I hold my child every night when she has her nightmares, I remind myself that I sent her to Notaway County schools because I thought that she was safe there. The children are the future of this county, and so we will, and so we will need to be, we will need to be protecting them. What will you do to hold this county board, the county school board accountable and ensure the safety of the most innocent citizens of Notaway County? Before you say you're not involved here, remember who you represent, and remember that you provide funding to the schools. So this chaos runs off of our tax money and also hurts those who voted for you, as well as their children. Right now, the only one acting in the best interest of the children is Mr. John Rourke. Thank you for standing up for the children of Notaway County, Mr. Rourke. And to the rest of you, do you care about the children? I do. I am just a parent seeking change on behalf of a victim of the Notaway County schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. John Shute?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening for Burkeville Volunteer Fire Department, and it's to talk a little bit about the stuff that's on the agenda for the boundary adjustments. While Burkeville Fire Department has no opinion on the boundary adjustments themselves, we do have concerns on the impact that it may have on Burkeville Volunteer Fire Department. As a lot of people know, in October, we started staffing two firefighter EMTs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that is the money to pay for that, and the money to pay for our previous employees has always come from revenue recovery. There are areas within the boundary adjustment discussions that make us concerned about that revenue stream or part of that revenue stream. So a lot of people don't know, we are the busiest fire department in Notaway County in that we provide ambulance services in addition to fire protection. We had 895 service requests last year. 150 of them were outside of our first due area, and more importantly, 110 of them were for ambulance calls that there was no other ambulance available in Notaway County. So we'd like in the discussion of the boundary adjustment that people remember the importance of that fire department. If we were to lose that fire department, it would cause increased insurance rates. It would also cause property values to go down, and it would hamper economic development up there because the fire station would be over five miles away from the closest fire station. So we think there are points that are important. We have nothing to do with the boundary adjustment at all, and how you respond to it is how you can respond to it. We thought that was important, and without our career staff to assist the volunteers, there is no Burkeville Fire Department. It will shut down. So it's really important that it stays in place somehow. You know, I guess that falls back on community leaders to figure that out. Sorry about the phone. I thought I muted the stupid thing. I got it.
We've all done it.
We've all done that.
Yeah. Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Ms. Jessica Kidd?
Good evening.
My name is Jessica Kidd, and I reside in Notaway County. I own a cleaning business, and I'm a personal example of accountability. Anyone that knows me, I've come from a rough life. I made a lot of bad choices, and I held myself accountable, and I came out of that, and now I have a successful business, and I try to teach my children to do that. And it really, I'm very frustrated. I'm very angry, but I still have hope because I do have faith. And I'm hoping that these matters aren't just hushed or, you know, made to look good for a short while, just to hush everybody up, and that something really happens to where there is change. I'm speaking because my daughter goes to Notaway Middle School, and she has personal problems with the situations that are going on, and she's afraid to speak up, and it makes me so mad because I am very verbal. She was bullied. She was sitting in a seat that a teacher assigned her to sit in, and a boy beat her up, and nothing was done in the moment, so other boys beat the boy up. And then my daughter was told she cannot be a cheerleader because of her causing drama when she was being bullied. She gets great grades. She gets honor roll grades. So I don't understand why her not doing anything, she's not, and then another situation where she was bullied and did defend herself, and she got in trouble for that. I understand she got in trouble for that, but if this would stop ahead of time, it wouldn't happen. We give a pledge of allegiance to the flag, and we want to be united together, but there's so much division. In every situation, there's so much division. Why? When we need to be teaching, the golden rule should be stamped on the school. Do unto others as you would have others do unto you. These kids are going around being mean and hateful because it's allowed, and the teachers are doing nothing about it. I know a situation where teachers are sitting on the bleachers outside at recess, told the kids, "Leave us alone and don't bother us unless somebody is dying out there," while I have a video of a young man getting beat the crap out of, and they didn't do anything about it. And, I mean, yes, the kids need to be taught, but how can they be taught if the teachers are not leading by example and no one is holding themselves accountable? And I understand that we are a poor community, and they're not getting a lot of money, but you know what you sign up for. All teachers know, and they're supposed to do it with a teaching heart. They're supposed to do it because they want to nurture our youth, and they are our future. And for them to just toss them by the wayside and just say, "Because I'm not getting enough money, I'm not going to give enough into them," that's what the problem is, and it's disgusting when money is chose over morals. It's so terrible. I'm going to give you a couple more instances while I have enough time. My daughter had her cellphone taken in school. She was probably looking on it. The teacher, same teacher that was sitting in the bleachers, takes her cellphone and scrolls through my daughter's pictures and says, "They hope that there's not any bikini pictures in there." This is a man telling my daughter, "They hope there's no bikini pictures in the photos," and that if she says anything, he's going to text her mother from her phone. I wish he would have. The same teacher, standing in a health classroom behind a female student grabbing on her backside, and the student will not come forward because she wants to get good grades. The list goes on and on and on and on. I'm telling you, I have so much wrote down. My daughter's not a liar, and neither are several other children. If anyone knows me about this, they know, a lot of kids come to me. I'm a mother to anyone and everyone, and they tell me things that they won't come up here and tell you. They won't go to the school because, so now it's circumstantial. Then it's not going to be addressed and looked into, and why is a male teacher standing in the female or male bathrooms monitoring after the situation in October? Why? Why is this happening? And so then, when this got word last night, all of a sudden today, the bathrooms are locked all day, and they can only go use the bathrooms at lunchtime? That is not how you handle situations. Something needs to be done, and it's not by punishing students so where they cannot have a voice. And I will be their voice, and I thank you, Mr. Rourke, and I thank you, Mr. Colburn, and anyone else here, I hope you stand up for what is right and don't fear any kind of just corruption in this community. We need to stand together. We need something overturned, and we need it immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Linda Hines?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I stand before you today to ask that you bring a vote before the Notaway Board of Supervisors to allow Blackstone to extend the water line down through Cox Road. We have been working on this issue through Mr. Vaughn, through members of Blackstone since 2019. We had a public town hall back in the summer of 2021, and my understanding was that it was to be brought before the Board of Supervisors for a vote. To my knowledge, that has not happened, unless I am incorrect on that. I know there is concern from some members of the board that it may disenfranchise some of the residents on Cox Road. However, I do believe that people have a right to safe drinking water. Residents have muddy water, brown water, you can't drink it, you don't even want to bathe in it. We have had our water tested, and it had all types of bacteria in it. I actually had the person to come down from Roanoke who looked at it again to say, "Well, would digging a well help?" No, it will not help. And at this point, our only solution is really to have additional clean water. I know there was a concern about funds and offsetting this for the residents, and I'm sure that you are aware that this past year, that there were provisions given through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 that allows, and I quote, "drinking water infrastructure and resources to support equal access to drinking water at small and disadvantaged community waterworks. These funds shall be limited in their use to qualifying municipal and private drinking water projects and shall not be used for improvements to the department's internal systems, staffing, or processes." And in 2022, $50 million has been allocated for Virginia. And 2023, '24, another $50 million. And certainly, I think if we should apply, we may be granted this money, who will help to offset some of the costs so that residents along this road can have access to safe drinking water. So again, my ask tonight is that you take this matter up, and you have the vote that we discussed at the public hearing back in the summer of 2021, so that Blackstone can move forward. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes delegations from the public. Public hearings have been removed from our agenda. Mr. Costin, before we proceed with the presentations, I believe you may have an introduction to make tonight?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Previously, I'd announced that the county has hired a planning and economic development director, Greg Zodi. Mr. Zodi will start February 1, but Mr. Zodi is here tonight. So Greg, if you would, and you want a couple moments at the mic?
Sure. Thank you all for bringing me here. It's, I'm a Blacksburg boy, and I've worked in the New River Valley Planning District Commission, the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission, as well as, my last job in Virginia was with Bedford County, as well as Orange County. I'm a huge fan of blending economic development with planning, and by that I mean reduction of regulations to an extent, so, but still protect other people's property values. But I'm really big on incentivizing home-based businesses and whatnot. But again, you know, that's down the road and everything, but my day, what I really want to do is get familiar with the folks in Notaway County, listen to what they need and what they want in terms of future land use with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance issues. So I just want to thank you all, and I arrived here from Oregon Saturday, and I've, I realize why I came back to Virginia. It's just people are so nice and just down to earth, and it just makes, I feel welcome. Thank you all very much for the opportunity.
Welcome, Mr. Zodi. Mr. Zodi, may I like to present you with the Notaway County pen, the lapel pen.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Welcome.
I look forward to, I actually work with Paul.
All right. So this evening, we're pleased to recognize the service of some of our dedicated Notaway County employees, and Mr. Costin, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. The board will recall shortly after my arrival, I proposed an employee recognition program based on years of service, which the board found acceptable. Tonight, we kick off that program. However, upon further review, looking at the totality of individuals who have earned recognition, we thought it best to make this a monthly occurrence as opposed to yearly because of the sheer volume of persons, the holding capacity here, and the time it would take in any one meeting. Persons being recognized have their anniversary date in the month that they are recognized, although perhaps they have not hit their exact anniversary date. Before recognizing the inaugural group of persons, I'd like to recall a statement I made in August in my first remarks to the board after you hired me. I wish to tell you that John, that was John Anzavino, has been very candid with me about many things, as he has, I am sure, been with you, and one of those things is the quality and dedication of the county staff. I'm anxious to join this group and do whatever I can to make their experience as an employee of Notaway County beneficial to the citizens and meaningful for them, building on the foundation John has laid. Now that I've been with the county about five months, I can only tell you that Mr. Anzavino's assessment of the staff was an understatement. I've learned of multiple occasions where the staff went the extra mile, often at personal sacrifice and occasionally personal risk. I'm very proud of being associated with such a fine group of persons. The first group to be recognized this evening are those persons who have at least one year's association with the county, but not five. Those persons are being presented with a county lapel pin if they have not already received one. Those persons are primarily solid waste convenience center attendants. I don't believe any of them are here this evening, but if they are, I ask them to step forward. Lemuel H. Bowden, Michael T. Hart, Raymond E. Percerson, and Andrea Kelly with County Administration.
All right.
Receiving a five-year certificate, which the chair will read, is Logan Presley.
County of Notaway Certificate of Commendation presented to Logan Presley in recognition of five years of service to the County of Notaway and its citizens issued this 20th day of January 2022. Congratulations and thank you.
All right. We need five more years, right?
We have no one this evening that qualified for the 10-year mark, but we do have an individual who is qualified for 15 years.
Wow.
Mr. John Hill.
Hey.
All right, hey.
Certificate of Appreciation issued by the County of Notaway presented to John every day of January in recognition of 15 years of service to the County of Notaway and its citizens and the local redevelopment authority issued this 20th day of January 2022. Thank you, John. Congratulations.
Red John. Thank you.
We have plaques for 20 and 25 years, and we have one person reaching each milestone. 20 years, Katie Tomer.
Oh, hey, hey. Oh, yeah, plenty.
County of Notaway Certificate of Commendation presented to Katie Jim Tomer in recognition of 20 years of service to the County of Notaway and its citizens and county administration issued this 20th day of January 2022. Congratulations.
All right.
Our final recognition this evening is for 25 years of service, and in addition to the plaque, we're adding in a $25 gift certificate for Susan Howe.
Oh, Susan.
County of Notaway Certificate of Commendation presented to Susan V. Howe in recognition of 25 years of service to the County of Notaway and its citizens as library branch manager issued this 20th day of January 2022. Thank you, Susan. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Howe.
What kind of camera is it?
Let's see. I believe we have Ms. Brigance with us, the Chair of the Notaway County Social Services Board, and she's here to introduce the Social Services Department's new director. Good evening, Ms. Brigance.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, Madam Chair, the board, and everyone present.
Good evening.
I am very pleased
Good to see you.
to introduce our new Director of Social Services, Ms. Shannon Reed. She comes to us with a very impressive resume, a lot of experience, and has a lot to offer to the department. And I'm not going to go on and on because I want her to have a chance to have a presentation or tell us what she wants to tell you all. She's already told us what she would like to tell you. Bernetta Watkins retired in September after four to six and a half years, and we were, of course, without a director. We were blessed to have Ms. Rose Monstraco to come in and fill in on a contract. She's still with us, and she has been a blessing to Notaway Social Services. We were very fortunate that the people in Richmond from Social Services sent us these applications, and we were really fortunate to have such a high degree of applicants, and we are real proud again to introduce to you all Ms. Shannon Reed, the Director of the Notaway Social Services Department effective February 1, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Brigance.
Good evening.
As stated, I am Shannon Reed. I am very proud, and I've graciously accepted the position as the Director of the Notaway County Department of Social Services. I come to you with over 20 years of experience. My most, most tenure has been with the Department of Social Services. My goals here are to improve organizational productivity, ensure great customer service, also while enhancing the culture of this agency. This is a time of change, and I plan to embrace it. I'm passionate about all Department of Social Services matters, which include effective communication, outstanding service delivery, and these things all equate to success, which I'm all about. I look forward to working with each of you, citizens of Notaway County. If you ever have a problem or need, please don't hesitate to come. Send those who you know need us because we'll be there to serve. Again, I look forward to working with each of you. Again, I look forward to working with each of you.
Welcome, and thank you.
Congratulations.
Is Ms. Marilyn Hill here tonight? Hi, Ms. Hill. Ms. Hill, the Assistant Warden at Nottaway Works Center, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And you're here to provide us an annual report on the Works Center?
Well, I don't know. First of all, good evening to everybody. I am so excited to be here. It's been a while since I've visited with you all. So Happy New Year, and I'm just excited to be here.
Yes, ma'am.
It's an honor to be standing in front of you all. We...I'm speaking tonight for our Director, Harold Clark, our Chief of Operations, David Robinson, and our new Warden at the Nottaway Correctional Center, Clint Davis. We have had our challenges, as everyone has, with COVID. We suspended working in the community for about any year. And then we got back to work in July. And then, all of a sudden, Omicron came. And so we had to pull back again. But I'm here to let you all know that we are committed to the County of Nottaway, who holds a special place in my heart. I started working here 32 years ago, so I love Nottaway County. But we're committed to saving you all money, providing inmate labor to accomplish the tasks that we've been doing in the community, also providing officers to supervise those inmates, and whatever else that you all need. I'm a phone call away. I'm receptive to assisting with anything that you all need. And again, I'm just excited to be here. And to old friends, it's good to see you again. And to new friends, I'm glad to meet you all. One more thing I want to say to the Sheriff's Department, your Sheriff's Department, your EMTs, and your Fire Department. We are so thankful for the service they provide to the Correctional Center because I'm sure you know, we call you all a lot. But again, thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you all. And we're here to serve you. And you all are the best community partners anyone could have.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. We appreciate you coming. Mr. Paul Lee of Robinson Farmer Cox is here to present the county's 2021 fiscal year audit.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight.
Hi, Mr. Lee.
To present the audit. Say on the outset that you achieved an unqualified or unmodified opinion again on the overall financial statements. That's been the case for a number of years. That's a good thing to look to. For federal compliance issues, no issues were found. This year, we had not only...
Mr. Lee, excuse me.
Yes.
Excuse me. Could we refrain from conversations while we've got the presentation going on? Thank you. I'm sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. This year, you had CARES Act, which was a very major program for federal expenditures. We tested compliance on that. Excuse me, as well as Title I. And they were our major programs that we tested. No exceptions noted there either. And one thing I'd like to point out, just this year, your federal expenditures increased by about $2 million. And that was primarily the result of CARES Act and those funds that came in. Unused at the end of the year, you still have a million and a half, or 1.1 million at June 30. It was still left over to be spent this year. That is not included in your fund balances, shown as a liability, until it is recognized as a revenue, actually, when the expenditures are made. And also, your ARPA money had not been received the first half of that until after the fiscal year, so that's not included there either. So you've got a couple of big grants there that you're still spending on for FY '22 and beyond. On a side, general fund balance was about $15.7 million at the end of the year. You're in very good financial condition, based on that number. The tax collection percentage, I always like to present or give that to you, it was 98% this year. That's if I take the delinquent or the current taxes, add those to the delinquent, and compare that to your assessment. It's always good in the budget process to know where you are, what you can expect to collect when you assess taxes. And so that's good. One last thing I wanted to mention here before we get into a management letter. GASP 84 was implemented for the first time this year. Really, for you, that amounted to bringing the balances of the school activity funds on to the school's statements. They're in a separate fund. They're not available for appropriation. But you can see the beginning balances, the revenues and expenditures, and the ending balances of those funds. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that. If you read the opinion, you'll see that we note that there's an accounting principle change in FY '21, and that's what it was. Repeat management letter from last year, as far as we need to get the... all the IDA members to do an economic disclosure notification or sheet, just like you guys do, and you probably have done by February 1 of this year. They need to do it as well. And I know this is not a problem just for Nottaway. It's a problem for everywhere, for getting the IDA members to get those done. Also, this year, we issued a weakness with the report itself, or the...not the report itself, but the compiling of the report. We're just looking for some additional work by your staff and maybe a consultant to help get the accruals posted into the trial balance before we come on site. If we're to stay independent of the county, we can't really assist with doing those accruals. We talked to Katie and Mr. Coniston about that when we exited the county. And just that's a recommendation that either possibly a consultant... I know you've hired a new assistant person in the Finance Department that has good experience from Lunenburg, and she could probably take some of that on as well. But we just need to look to get that done. Other than that, that's what I wanted to present to you tonight, other than take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lee?
No, ma'am. Madam Chair, just a point of clarification. So, and that may not be towards him. It may be towards Katie and yourself, maybe, I don't know. The CARES money, we can still spend some up to the end of this fiscal... No.
I think it was...
Stop shaking your head at me. You know the rule.
I think it was December 31, right?
In the end of December.
End of December. Okay, all right. And I thought...that's what we said. And I thought I heard at the fiscal year. I misunderstood. Thank you.
You just had about $1,001 left over at the end of last fiscal year.
And we have to give that back. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Ms. Tony, did you wish to speak to the audit?
Forgive me for reading here. I don't want to mess up my own comments. I just wanted to offer some thoughts from our perspective on this year's audit, on what Mr. Lee has reported, what Mr. Coniston included in his memo to you all about the audit. You know, bringing on a local government accounting and financial consultant is common practice. When I came here, we had one on staff. Not on staff, but we had one that provided services to us. I'm not sure where that ended and why, but it was one here that was obviously 20 years ago. And just one of them that we've been made aware of, that's been suggested to us, provides services... she or her firm provides services to over 44 localities in the Commonwealth. So, I mean, it's a legitimate action on behalf of the localities to do the right thing, to have all the numbers right, to, you know, put confidence in what's reported to you. And obviously, I say that because we all know there's been a great deal of citizen doubt over, you know, many things in the county. You know, let's not pretend that finances isn't one of them. You know, the county's financial standing, its fund balance, you know, what it spends, what it hasn't spent. So I say that, and I follow that with what Mr. Lee was saying. The auditing regulations, every year, they come at us with something different that's been put on them to do. VRS, CARES, the ARPA money. I mean, that's just to name a few. That's what we're dealing with. The school, the federal funding, I mean, it's pretty tough on all of us. And I'm not up here crying about that, but it does change. It's legitimate, you know. You know, you've heard Robinson Farmer Cox every year report that the county's financial reporting is done on a modified accrual basis. Now, if you know governmental accounting, you know what that means. But if you don't, they're just words to most people, you know? You know, we don't have a lot of ways as staff to improve transparency for the citizens. We know that's what they want. The one thing we can kind of control is the numbers. And, you know, I always say, we talk about it in the office very frequently. You know, we want to be part of the solution. And this puts us in the right direction. It gives the citizens confidence in the numbers. It gives us an extra hand so that we don't feel like the auditors are holding our hands, quite frankly, you know? Because we know what that looks like. We know what it reflects. And we don't, you know, we want to be on our own. We want to stand on our own. And especially with the limited staff we have, we want you all to be confident and proud of us. So, you know, it's not that I don't enjoy Paul and Taylor and all their company. I wouldn't be mad if they didn't stay as long. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Katie? Need any clarification? May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So this would be an independent audit specialist, not a county employee?
No.
Okay.
They are certified governmental accountants.
Okay.
CPAs that have specialty in governmental accounting.
Okay, thank you. So...
Madam Chair, on that point, the fact that they are independent audit consultant and not a county employee gives them that objectivity in that they're not coming under any kind of undue influence in making any recommendations or findings of material or that it is basically a data collection role that they would be employing. The staff would recommend that you take action to accept the auditor's report and include authorizing staff to pursue retaining an independent audit consultant. Be happy to take any questions you have.
Are there any questions for...or some clarification for Mr. Coniston? So there's a recommended motion in Mr. Coniston's memorandum. Do we have a motion to accept the audit and the recommendation to retain an independent audit specialist?
Some move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please vote nay. The motion passes, and we have approved the staff to move forward with retaining an independent audit specialist, and we have approved the audit report for fiscal year 2021. Okay. So Mr. Thrower or Mr. Miskovic, are you here to speak on behalf of the crew boundary line adjustment request?
Yes, ma'am. I'll go ahead and start, and then turn it off to Mr. Thrower with some more facts and information. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Coniston.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, the Town of Crew is again asking the board to authorize staff to proceed with the actions necessary to adjust crew's boundary lines to incorporate the three state facilities into town limits. Our goals for this initiative have been and continue to be twofold. First, to bring the Town of Crew's population over 3,500 in order to trigger town ownership of secondary roads. And second, to provide for transformative regional water partnerships while protecting the town's financial future. I'm going to give a little bit of background, go over the history of the request, and then ask our town manager, Mr. Thrower, to go over the details. We can then answer any questions you have. As you know, roughly 63% of the water produced by the Town of Crew is sold to three state facilities, P and M Chiropractic Hospital, VCBR, and Nottaway Correctional Center. In 2020, the General Assembly included in its budget funding for a study and plans to support the water needs of the state facilities. The Town of Crew, DBHDS, DOC, and the Department of General Services were listed as partners in this effort, with DGS serving as the project lead. Several months later, just over a year ago, Prince Edward County requested this board pass a resolution that would effectively allow Prince Edward County to construct and operate a public water supply system within the boundaries of Nottaway County. On February 25, following a presentation from Prince Edward County and comments from stakeholders, the Town of Crew expressed grave concerns about the resolution as presented. Because 63% of our water is sold to the state facilities, and because our wastewater budget is subsidized by water revenues, our utility system is financially dependent on continued sale of water to our largest customers. But in my comments, I also said a regional solution may be a viable solution for all of Western Nottaway County. It may even be the best option. The Town of Crew is open to discussing these options. You'll recall that the board tabled the requested resolution until it could be further discussed in a work session. Two weeks later, after discussion with the Crew Town Council, Mr. Thrower and I came to you again with a solution that we believed would benefit everyone. Move crew's limits to incorporate the state facilities. If the state facilities were within crew's corporate limits, we would have no objection to Prince Edward's request, as Prince Edward would also need to request permission from Crew before building a water line within our locality. All regional partners could continue discussions on water partnerships. Nottaway County could agree to Prince Edward County's requested resolution, and the Town of Crew's interest would be protected. Everyone would be happy. There was a second goal, equally important for the long term, for our boundary line adjustment as well, increasing our population to above 3,500, which would allow us to maintain our own secondary roads. We would have pursued a boundary line adjustment if only for the requested population increase, but sometime in the future. Prince Edward's request at the time and the immediacy of the issue forced us to move our timeline ahead. A month after our boundary line adjustment request, the board, the town, Prince Edward, and other stakeholders met at Fort Pickett Office Club, where Prince Edward presented a watered-down resolution that was agreeable to everyone. Two weeks later, on April 30, DGS met with the Town of Crew, State Facilities, and the Town of Blackstone. Per the analysis of their engineer, the best solution for the facilities would be tapping into Blackstone's water supply rather than improving crew facilities or partnering with Prince Edward County. Given this development, the water goal of the boundary line adjustment became less important. Focus for the BLA was put almost entirely on the population increase. The next seven months saw planning meetings between DGS, the Town of Crew, the Town of Blackstone, and other partners. Then, on December 3, DGS informed Crew and Blackstone that decision was made to make Prince Edward and not Blackstone its primary water sourcing partner. Then, just last week, the Town of Crew was informed by DGS that the state intends on purchasing water directly from Prince Edward County, bypassing the Town of Crew entirely. This was the result we feared and predicted based on Prince Edward's initial request last year, and as I mentioned at the time, would pose an existential threat to the Town of Crew. Given this development, the water goal of the boundary line adjustment has again become critical and immediate, though, to reiterate, not the only rationale for the request. To conclude, the bottom line is this. From the first mention of the BLA, crew's sole focus has been on the two goals: to bring the Town of Crew's population over 3,500 in order to trigger the town ownership of secondary roads, and two, to provide for transformative regional water partnership while protecting the town's financial future. We want to be good partners, to find a solution that benefits everyone. We know that the future of Crew in Nottaway County lies in collaboration, cooperation, and regionalization. We want to do whatever we can to pave the way for economic growth for Western Nottaway County and beyond, but in a manner responsible to the financial needs... but in a manner responsible to the financial needs for the people of Crew. As we suggested in our first presentation on March 9th last year, this BLA allows for all regional partners to continue discussions on water partnerships while at the same time protecting the interests of Crew and all of our water customers. It also allows us to have more control over the maintenance of roads and sidewalks in town limits. To briefly respond to Chief Schut's concerns earlier this evening, the Town of Crew fully understands the concerns Burkeville Fire Department and will welcome, embrace, and support any administrative resolution that Mr. Costin and Mr. Hyde can work out to preserve Burkeville Fire Department's interests. We strongly urge the board to move forward on the requested boundary line adjustment, and I'll now pass off to Brian for details.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you to Mayor Miskovic. Hello, Honorable Board of Supervisors, County Administration. Appreciate you having us here tonight. Our mayor went over several of the reasons why we're pursuing this boundary line adjustment. I'll just kind of reiterate some of that and add a little bit of new information. As you are aware, the town has been in discussions with the county regarding the boundary line adjustment request since March of last year, 2021. As such, the mayor and town council have requested the board add this item to its meeting agenda tonight for your consideration. The town specifically requests that the board take formal action via vote at tonight's meeting, authorizing staff and legal counsel to proceed immediately with the boundary line adjustment as outlined in state code. As the mayor previously mentioned, the two primary reasons are as followed: VDOT state maintenance money. As you may be aware, cities and towns with populations of at least 3,500 receive annual VDOT maintenance funding. The Town of Crew is currently below this threshold at this time. The town does not receive VDOT funding, nor does it maintain the vast majority of its streets within the town. Per estimates provided by VDOT officials, the town would receive approximately $590,000 to $690,000 annually, that's $600,000 to $700,000 annually, if the town were to maintain its streets. This funding would be utilized by the town to pay for operating and capital expenses associated with properly maintaining its streets, sidewalks, and stormwater infrastructure. Residents would see immediate improvements in terms of new street milling and overlay projects and sidewalk repairs and replacements, something I don't think that's been done in Crew for quite a while. Additional staff could possibly be hired by the town with this funding. In addition, the town would save nearly $300,000 on an annual basis if it started receiving this VDOT revenue. Adding the inmates and residents from the state facilities to the town's population could enable the town to eclipse the 3,500 population threshold. In turn, again, the town will start receiving the annual VDOT street maintenance funding and realizing the benefits previously discussed. In addition, as the mayor previously mentioned, the second goal is to retain our state facilities as water customers. As you are aware, the Department of General Services is currently developing options regarding the provision of water for its facilities located in Ottawa County for its future needs. As the mayor alluded to, the town currently provides water to all of the state facilities located in Ottawa County, the Correctional Center, Piedmont Geriatric, and the VCBR. In FY '21, the water revenue attributed to the state facilities totaled $586,500. This accounted for 66% of the town's FY '21 actual water revenue, which was $889,642. Losing this revenue from the state facilities would necessitate dramatic and exponential rate increases on residents and businesses, including the Ottawa County School System and the county government offices itself. And just speaking of dramatic increases, we did recently receive Friday afternoon estimates from our engineering firm on how high the town would need to increase rates to make up for the loss of this state revenue. Per the rates and study provided by Herden Profit, the town would need to increase the minimum water rates by $40 per month, $40 per month, for both in-town residential and in-town business, that being the minimum rate categories. In addition, the overage fees would need to be doubled. Thus, the minimum water bill paid by in-town residents and in-town businesses would increase from $85 per month to $125 per month. That's $480 per year. That does not, again, that does not include doubling the overage fees by someone who exceeds 3,000 gallons per month. So you can see that's very dramatic. The rates for business out-of-town users, which include, again, the county offices and schools, as well as residential out-of-town users in the county, would increase from a base rate of 15.26 per month to $82.50 per month, also with the overage fees doubling. So you can see what effect this has on the rates that everybody in the county would have to pay for with the loss of this revenue. Again, the town's interest is to protect its water revenue streams in order to avoid the aforementioned costly increases to county customers and town customers. Permitting the town to incorporate the state facilities into the town limit serves to protect this revenue source. Per state code, section 15.2, 2143, no locality after July 1st '76 shall construct, provide, or operate outside of its boundaries any water supply system prior to obtaining the consent of the locality in which the system is to be located. If you were to approve this boundary line adjustment request, any locality wishing to provide water to the state facilities would be required to obtain the town's consent prior to doing. So as the mayor alluded to, the town looks forward to continuing its work with DGS on the water project and potentially other localities as water partners. However, protecting the town's water revenue and ensuring the state remains the customer of the Town of Crew is of paramount importance to the town, its residents, and businesses. And again, the town's request to you tonight is to take formal action via vote at tonight's meeting, authorizing county staff and legal counsel to proceed immediately with the boundary line adjustment as outlined in state code. And you can see all of these issues combined. This is literally over a million-dollar issue for the Town of Crew, if this were to go forward or not go forward. So we're requesting action via vote tonight, authorizing proceeding with the Town of Crew going forward on this boundary line adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thrower. Mr. Welch, we have Mr. Brian Welch, Mayor of Burkeville, here to speak to us about Burkeville's boundary line adjustment request.
Madam Chair, members of the board. As you all know, I'm Brian Welch, Mayor of Town of Burkeville. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Dale Mullin, our legal counsel, for the boundary line adjustment and water project.
Not sure I should touch it. Good evening.
Good evening.
Board, my name is Dale Mullin. I'm with the law firm, Wafer Taylor Preston. I've got about 30 years in federal, state, and local government, and have actually been faced with some of these decisions that you're facing tonight, based on my time as county administrator and county attorney just a little north in Louisa. As you're well aware, and you've heard some of the arguments advanced, and it kind of feels like an argument because you really have two competing ideas tonight. But oftentimes, when you're faced with a difficult decision, you just have to make the right one. And I'm here to talk to you not about what it would do to the Town of Burkeville, or what we want from this particular boundary line adjustment, but instead, how it affects you, and how it potentially affects the citizens of the Town of Burkeville as well as the Town of Crew. First, I'd like to say that the Town of Burkeville also has been serving the same kinds of facilities, the same kinds of citizens. And you've already heard the concerns advanced about public health, safety, and welfare through fire service. There are other concerns that would be solved through a mutually beneficial partnership with the Department of General Services, as well as the other state branches and the county, that have to do with the development of the Sandy River Reservoir water source. And it's those that I'm here to address tonight. There were two options considered. One had to do with continuing to draw water from a Fort Pickett source. The other has to do with the development of the source that you've already heard talked about tonight. The Sandy River Reservoir source is a better source, and Burkeville has long been a supporter of that Sandy River Water Project. It's clean, it's safe, and it's reliable. And it can provide water not just now, but for generations to come. The town issued a letter in June 2005 in support of Prince Edward County's initial withdrawal application from the Sandy River Reservoir, and most recently adopted a unanimous resolution in support on April 13th, 2021, for the permit renewal application that was filed in September of 2021. The 2005 letter and the 2020-21 resolution, I understand, have already been provided to the members of this board. The town understands that the state has been weighing options for several months. However, as those options have been considered, there became clear some very good reasons for the Sandy River Reservoir option, including the Town of Burkeville's request for a boundary line adjustment. And those are that the Sandy River Reservoir is, again, proven, safe, and reliable as a long-term regional water source. There are some long-term water quality concerns that have been raised with the continued use of the Pickett Reservoir. Additionally, there are water quality concerns that come from the distance between the Blackstone Water System and the customers at the end of that system. As water has to be taken from place to place, and as it sits in the line, there are certain costs. There's also certain risk associated with keeping that water in line for so long. The distance from the water source to the state facilities, to the Town of Burkeville, and potentially to the Town of Crew, exposes all of the parties to increased operational costs and capital cost. There's some potential treatment mitigation and litigation costs should it ever be discovered that there's an adverse or harmful chemical component in the Blackstone water source. There's also some uncertainty that's presented by the federal government's power. And one of the things that I offer tonight is the ability to work with a partner who's been involved since the beginning, who knows how to complete this kind of project, and who offers a viable alternative, again, not just now, but for generations to come. The concern about Fort Pickett comes back to the concern that is raised with recent events, including the recent relocation of refugees to that source and how it might ultimately be used and impact the water supply. There is a potential long-term 50-year water source available from the Town of Blackstone. But there are long-term effects in the state choices and the financial viability of the Town of Burkeville in the choice that's made tonight. And so I'm here to answer any questions that you have. But I will say that, in closing, with significant federal, state, and funds available right now, and this is really the big pitch, the ability to access those funds right now. And you visit these same meetings all around the state. I heard it tonight. You don't have to attend very many, and you hear citizens start asking for water, wastewater, and other utilities. The ability to work together with Prince Edward County, with the state, to access those funds right now would best be accomplished by selecting the boundary line adjustment. Do you have any questions that I could answer while I'm here?
I do, Madam Chair. Clean, safe, reliable. Is there any specific reason why you pointed that out twice?
It is. One of the things that I have the great fortune to be able to do is to travel around the country and work with folks who have impacted water sources. I don't know if you've heard, and now I'll start talking about letters, and I'll try to do it in such a way that it doesn't confuse or bore. But I'm sure you've heard of PFAs and PFOAs. Those have been ubiquitous, not just on military sites, but on industrial sites. And there's a very good reason. Back when I served in the United States Navy overseas, we used to take what was called at that time A triple F. This is firefighting foam. This firefighting foam was used widely by the US military, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard. And anytime I see a facility that has a water source that's co-located near or at a military installation of any description, that always becomes one of the concerns. So that Supervisor Rourke is just one of the concerns, but it's certainly at the top of my mind because it has been an initiative, I would say, of the present administration's EPA. And frankly, it's one of what they call a forever chemical, and it's very, very difficult to remediate against.
Madam Chair, for me, what do you have to support your statement about long-term use of Fort Pickett? I mean, is there, do you have tests to prove, or are you just guessing?
I wouldn't say I'm guessing. But I would also not say that I have chemical analysis in the form of a Phase 1 or 2 from the site.
I mean, what I'm saying is, is I'm concerned that you're, essentially, you've rung a bell saying that Blackstone's water supply is not safe with no testing to present to us. That's a dangerous accusation.
Sir, I'm not making any accusation at all.
That's exactly what it sounds like to me.
Then allow me to state it more clearly.
Okay.
I was asked, do you have any concerns about a water source that is co-located at Fort Pickett? I am saying, one of the concerns that I have whenever I look at a water source that's at or near a military installation is the presence of chemicals, and I only listed one. I mean, I could give you a list of other chemicals. It's the same as Supervisor Rourke when you look at an industrial site. But I'm not a scientist. I was asked what my concern was. That's simply my opinion.
And that's something, based on what?
30 years of knowledge, skills, and experience.
But without a test, without a sample?
Well, I haven't run a single test. I want to be super clear on this. Absolutely, sir, not a single test.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, may I say something? I'm the mayor of Town of Blackstone, and I appreciate Supervisor Rourke's questions. I want to ensure everybody here that can hear this. Our water is tested by the Joint Department of Health regularly. Its capacity exceeds a minimum. This has been a red herring in front of Blackstone. This was going to be a wonderful joint venture at one time. And then all of a sudden, I started seeing social media late summer. People started throwing the DFS out there. A lot of folks who aren't familiar with Fort Pickett might be invited to know that Fort Pickett Reservoir is at the... All the activity and training activity at Fort Pickett where foam has been used is downstream, not above the reservoir or conceiving of the reservoir. It's several miles away over the face. We in Blackstone were willing to work with anybody. We were hoping to get a deal together with Crew. I do want to say this on the record. I've read some emails from the state. This doesn't affect you, sir, or Burkeville. How the state has done this has been really unfortunate. They quit returning phone calls. Our town manager had to make a phone call and be informed. Suddenly, as Mr. Thrower said, that Blackstone is no longer in running, which is fine. We've got 8 million gallon a day capacity. We're fine. We'd like to make this deal. We're going to be fine regardless. But I just can't let the Town of Blackstone water supply even have a question rate that... I've lived there, I've lived there 53 years. My family's there, we drink tap water. We don't buy bottled water. So I've got to fight back on that. But how the state conducted this has not been a good government partner. No matter what side you're on, the state's been very disappointed. We spent about $15,000 doing due diligence at their request. The state came to us. We didn't go trying to pirate a water customer. And we spent $15,000 only to be told at the end of the day, oh, by the way, we're going to front serve. Which begs another question. It might be interesting to know how many folks are drawing water from the wonderful Sandy River Reservoir right now that was built in 1994. It's double our size, it's 700 acres. The answer's zero. Might be worth asking why the Town of Faribault hadn't drawn water from the wonderful Sandy River Reservoir. Just interesting questions to ask, so I want to make sure everybody has the global situation. Thank you, I apologize, Madam Chair, but I had to respond to that.
Thanks for the input. As long as, Sean, you're with the Crew Town Council, as long as we're accepting input.
The Town of Crew, all the way through this process, has been blocked out. The discussions that took place with Blackstone took place between DGS and Blackstone. And they came to the Town of Crew, and they said, hey, this is what we think will work the best. You know what the Town of Crew said? The Town of Crew said, awesome, as long as we can still sell water to Burkeville to those facilities. Then they came back as the date's given, and they said, well, you know what? Yeah, Blackstone...
Now Blackstone's, actually, they didn't. Blackstone was good enough to let me and a couple of others know that the state had reversed their city, and they were going back to Farmville, or Prince Edward. You know what the town of Crew's response to that was? Awesome. We really don't care, and unfortunately, we're being called in the middle, and we have the most to lose of any stakeholder in it. I hate to mention it, but Burkeville's got 422 people. I've got 2,200 people. That include elderly, socioeconomic strata, a lot of rental houses, but right now, people are going in and they're spending seven, eight, nine, a hundred, a thousand dollars a month to live in a house with windows in it. But we're going to have to double their water bill. My mother is 74 years old. The difference in an $84, $5 a month water bill and $145 a month water bill to some people is significant. And during this whole process, my folks have said, we're good with whatever. Just don't back us up. And during the process, nobody's come to Crew. DGS refused a request of ours to come sit down with us and present to us this change. What are we doing? Why are you changing? And our response the whole time was, we're good with that. Just don't cut us out. I hope that you guys, knowing what your budget looks like, and some of you haven't had experience looking at what our budget looks like, can appreciate what a $1.2 to $1.4 million swing in our budget does to us. This isn't a little thing. This isn't, and I also want to be clear to the Honorable Mayor of Burkeville, we will back you guys, anything you want to do for economic development, anything, Mr. Schuett, that you meet with Burkeville Fire Department, we'll be willing to go along and work with you guys in any way that we can do that. We have no desire for your business. It's not our place. But I am charged with responsibility from the people of the town of Crew and look out for the people of the town of Crew, and it seems to us that we're the only ones who stand something to lose here. Not Count, not town Blackstone, not town Burkeville, just us. So I would most certainly ask that you guys take the time to consider the big picture here. All we are asking is the opportunity to be given a seat at the table.
Thank you, Sean. All good, relevant input. Mr. Muller, is there anything further from you?
No, just to clarify, and I'm sorry, sir, I didn't catch your name. I'm sorry.
Billy Colburn, mayor of the town of Blackstone. I'm wearing two hats tonight. Colburn, yes.
Colburn. I just wanted, Mr. Colburn, I wasn't.
They have same real face.
Certainly, no reason to believe that there is any problem with your water supply. As a matter of fact, in Virginia, we're fortunate, we have a really good Virginia Department of Health that takes care of water quality. It's one of the best in the country. No reason to believe that there's anything wrong with your water supply. You said fight back, and I'm not fighting the other direction. I certainly second that. I'm sure that if you're selling it to customers, it's perfectly safe and good to drink. That's all.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for the good input.
Madam Chair, just so we can have open discussions, and I think Mr. Rourke had brought a point up. I want to clarify something just a little bit, so just to be completely transparent. Piedmont Geriatric Hospital, VCBR, is under the umbrella of DBHDS. Their mission is to treat for mental health. They're not in the mission of water. Same thing with the Gene Department of Corrections across the street. They have their own mission, but it's not, so DGS is another entity. I heard Mr. Colburn say the state. Well, let's clarify the state. Let's clarify the state. The state, in this case, is Department of General Services. But I'll have to say this, and everybody's in this room, because we've got common sense. What happened? Why would DGS decide to go west to another county and build a complete water, they've got to complete a whole water system, look, a water plant, the whole nine yards, when the infrastructure's already down at Blackstone? What happened? That's very odd to me. I mean.
That's not accurate.
No, what's not accurate about it is, well, I'm sorry, I thought I heard, I saw the letter that said DGS was going to Sandy River. Is that wrong or right?
What's inaccurate, Mr. Supervisor, is that.
Steve, you can call me Steve, it's good.
You and I go way back.
Right, right.
Prince Edward County is building a water treatment plant in preparation for a data center prospect. They are building it, they only want the state and the town of Crew to sign on to allow them to increase the size of the plant that they're building.
All right, so that's what I didn't understand, is the state is not building anything?
They are, and by our understanding from DGS, is that they would be, they would be taking care of the pipeline from the Nottaway County line to the state facility on their own.
That's your understanding, or do you know that? Have you seen that?
I believe that is what we have been told.
I'm not asking, have you seen that in writing? Is what I'm asking.
Oh, well, if DGS remember that.
Okay, okay. That's what I, okay.
That would be great. Prince Edward County, the mistake is the one building the water treatment plant. We've had the presentation from the Timmons Group initially way back.
The little meetings that I have seen, heard on the phone, it was really heading towards Blackstone, the direction of DGS. It was almost like it was a done deal, and then all of a sudden, it flipped. So it's like, why? Right? I mean, that's, and I'm not, you know, I'm not saying, anyway, because sometimes we get accused, oh, we're in private meetings. No, I don't know. That's why. I just think that's, and not only why, it's going to take longer. So something's, anyway, just want to, I just want to clarify the state, mayor, if you don't mind, because it is, right, right.
And Frank, I've heard some people say it's cheaper long-term. I don't know how, that may answer both of my papers.
And to also clarify, DGS is up, they are, they put like $7 million in the sewer plant at Virginia Department of Corrections, and that same sewer plant treats the town of Burkeville. So I just want to make sure people understand that, too. Okay?
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we have department reports. Including our package tonight, reports from Virginia Department of Transportation. Is anyone here? Nottaway County landfill solid waste report, building report, erosion and sediment control report from their building inspector, animal control report from their animal control officers. I don't think there's anything actually in the package from Piedmont Health District. We do have minutes from the Nottaway County Public Libraries Board of Trustees, January 19th meeting, and Item 7, Nottaway County School Board. Ms. Tomer, do you wish to speak to that?
You all know, the school board meeting was postponed as well. They just had that Monday night, so we won't have their report until next month. But last month's report, their December report had three budget adjustments included that were overlooked. So those three budget adjustments totaled $589,627.70. They included ARPA funds for HVAC replacements, Title I grant, and Perkins Grant carryovers. So I ask that you authorize for a public hearing next month on those.
We want to put that to a motion tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we, do we have a motion to authorize a public hearing?
So move.
All right. All in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please respond with nay. The motion passes.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, just a point of procedure here. Have we decided not to take action on the boundary adjustment at all?
That's for a little later down.
We're going to do that? Okay, okay. Just want to clarify to make sure.
We're going to have further discussion. Yes, I'm sorry. Anything additional from Department of Social Services tonight? We already had your good news.
Good.
Good. And then finally, we have a report from Mr. Hyde, our emergency services coordinator. Mr. Hyde, you've been busy. Do you wish to speak to anything that's in your report, or?
We have to verify the emergency.
It's all there in the packet. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer. We have been busy. There's three declarations, and this is what I have to do with it. It's all there, and we appreciate your cooperation.
Madam Chair. I do have some clarification that I like to get from Mr. Hyde, if that's okay. The, with the EOP, I'm sorry, the EOC, during the walkthrough assessment with DSS, I'd like to attend and also extend the invite to other DSS board members as well, with enough time to do a public notice for Quorum if the other members plan to attend, if that's okay. I don't know that they've ever had that opportunity. I'd just like to extend that to them if that's possible. And then, the CTA consultants provide a proposal for services. Is this for the public safety communication system? Is that what that proposal is?
That is correct, and that'll be coming to you next month, the February board meeting. Where we at there is just initial discussions with CTA LLC Incorporated, which is a very reputable, and we checked our references on this, they just helped Lunenburg and Amelia Counties, and they're looking at some other counties as well. It's under a cooperative purchasing agreement under the Virginia Code, and they had a very good meeting with us. Sheriff Jones, myself, and Lauren Brown, who's our new emergency communications director.
Yes, sir.
That was the initial meeting. We also had the president, the CEO of the company to go ahead and draft up, and that's what I'm referring to in your packet. They drafted up a new proposal. No decisions have been made. This is going to be something we'll have to review. They just made revisions to that, and Mr. Costin, Ms. Tomer, and myself, Sheriff Jones, and Ms. Brown will all be looking at this as a committee. Only the proposal for consulting. It's nothing in the nuts and bolts and hardware. That'll come with the building of the system.
Okay.
But it is on a comprehensive public safety system.
Okay. Well, under that Joint and Cooperative Procedure Code 2.2-4204, are we meeting all state requirements for procurement, and not just for consulting service, but any and all requirements as well?
Yes, that's been vetted by the previous counties that I mentioned, and that's set up to where, you know, any other county that's interested in doing that, and I understand there are counties behind Nottaway that are now looking at it as well. So we're just hoping that if this is successful, that we, you know, we'll get our name in there quicker than some of the other counties that may be looking at that, too.
Okay.
If it does go that way.
Okay, yeah, and when you say several neighboring counties have participated in this agreement, is this with our system or the projects on their own?
On their own.
Okay. Okay. And what are they saying about the results?
Very good, very impeccable company. Mr. Costin, also, we went down the list of counties that have used them, and one of the ones at a distance was Page County, and Page County had great remarks on the company. So they've helped Harrisonburg, they've helped Charlottesville, Albert Mall with a system, just a really impeccable resume, and they were able to present that to us at the first meeting. Nice bound copy of a proposal about the company. So we've vetted that, and we're just moving into the next step, which would be coming in with a proposal for you all to consider in February.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Hyde.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. All right, constitutional officers' reports and comments. Ms. Brown from the Circuit Court. Sheriff, anything from you tonight? We'll see Ms. Meyer or Ms. Hudson, Ms. Watrous from Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
Just a brief comment. I wanted to thank the board and Mr. Hyde. I, as a department head, I really appreciated the communication that has come with all of the storms, and then also communication from the county administrator's office as far as what different departments in the county are doing. It has been very appreciated, and I really like that we have that open line of communication now.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to unfinished business. Animal shelter update. Please to report that we have a deed ready to be executed and hopefully recorded tomorrow, the site deed. Our architects are ready and anxious to begin design as soon as that occurs. Mr. Costin, anything you want to?
A photo op, if you would like to sign the deed, it's been approved to form.
Pardon?
A photo op, if you would like to sign the deed, it's been approved to form.
Pardon?
Where is it? Where am I standing?
Herb sided, Lynn.
I'm on a roll.
Billy, you don't have a feel about this?
You're great, you're great, Madam Chair. Maybe you could use this when it gets its inscription.
That's true. It's time to change it, by the way.
So, once this notarized, we will record the deed tomorrow.
Great, thank you, Mr. Costin. Also, under the animal shelter, some very positive and significant news from the volunteer cares committee. They have exceeded $183,000 toward their fundraising goal of $500,000. They received a $100,000 grant from the Lambertus Foundation. $50,000 of that is included in the $83,000 total, and another $50,000 is forthcoming. So much appreciation to the cares committee, and congratulations on their fundraising success. Mr. Bowen, can you provide some updates tonight on the comprehensive plan and renewable energy facilities ordinance?
The comprehensive plan will be pretty quick. We're still moving forward. Like I said before, they're taking the opinions of different people that, when we put that survey out, and we're making some changes with that. There's some, there's some things that we probably need to get, it's going to take, it took us a little more time the other night, is we started looking at our zoning, you know, where we're on industry at, and, you know, it's not, it's not a real map, it's a map of maybe our expectations, like following the 460 corridor, 360 corridor type thing. So we're working on that as well, and we'd love to hear, you know, when we start giving out these drafts, we'd like to get your opinion on that as well, so, anyway. The, what was the other one?
Renewable energy facilities ordinance?
You called it a nice way, renewable, I'm calling solar. So the planning commission, we had a, we had a public hearing, and I thank Mr. Costin for getting us back on track. In that, in that process, actually, the public hearing was, is about changing our zoning ordinance to include the right verbiage in our zoning ordinance. And there are some, there are some possible projects, and that got kind of off to the side, where we were, some people think we were approving the projects. There is a project that was proposed, you know, we don't really have, like you, I don't have anything in writing, but one was proposed that was about the size of Blackstone. The other one that they did admit to, there's another project, the same project, maybe 700 acres, if you figure that out mathematically, that's about the size of Burkeville. So, you know, this is not going away. So we got to get the ordinance, the zoning ordinance straight first, and so the planning commission, and this is what public hearing is all about, you listen to what the public has to say, and a lot of people gave some good input. There's some House bills and Senate bills that are coming out that could change, you know, what you can do and what you can't do. Mr. Rash brought that point up. Mr. Ingram brought some points, just, it was, it was good, good communication of things that we could change and what we shouldn't change. So what the planning commission did, they tabled it and asked Mr. Anzavino, who we have signed him to this project, could he make some of them, I guess you could say, Mr. Costin, I mean, like subtle changes. Mr. Costin did follow through to make sure, once we've had his public hearing, and then we got to make, we got to propose it sooner or later to the board members to look at. And I think they have 60 days, Mr. Costin, is that right? 60 days. All right, so they table it, so that's 30 more days, and I don't know what the next action will be. We got to hear what Mr. Anzavino is bringing back to the table. So keep a good, I would ask you to keep a close eye on the general assembly and these House bills and Senate bills that are out there, and maybe, I was thinking, maybe, Mr. Costin, if you could, keep communication with VACO, if you could help me with that, and sending out maybe emails with those House bills and Senate bills, so we know what number they are, so if, you know, so we can watch it a little bit. So, but that's pretty much all I have right now. So that, that renewable energy part right now is completely tabled by the planning commission.
Okay.
And hopefully, I'll have a report next, in February.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Costin, do you want to speak to the boundary line adjustment issue?
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have a cover memo for me. This, obviously, a lot of the activity that was reported on tonight predates me. I mean, if we. if you heard numbers back to 2005. So, this is a long history on these projects. I think one of the things, I kept hearing the word clarity. I think perhaps the best way to get to some clarity is for, and I know people are not going to be real keen on hearing this, but another group meeting, there were some attempts at some meetings in the, between my arrival and tonight, when we tried to continue those, the suggestion was made that we should bring in DGS, and we should bring in VDOT. And those concepts weren't really well received. I'm going to stand by that and suggest that the board identify two supervisors, as well as myself, to meet with representatives, three representatives equal, you know, equal in size, three representatives of the town of Crewe, and three representatives of the town of Burkeville, to explore options and exchange information relative to the boundary line adjustment request from both towns. If that's not suitable, if that's not acceptable, then my suggestion would then be to say to the town of Crewe, "Sorry, we don't support this because Burkeville objects, Burkeville has some concerns." And then likewise, turn to Burkeville and say, "Sorry, we can't support this because Crewe objects." So, we've got the classic standoff, and I would hope that perhaps another meeting where clarity is brought out, that we could come to find a resolution or work a regional solution across the county, and perhaps even Prince Edward County. But that would be my recommendation, is appoint two supervisors, myself, to meet with three representatives of each of the two towns. Be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
I have a question. Mr. Costin, did you also recommend, your recommendation includes representatives from Virginia Department of General Services and Virginia Department of Transportation?
It does, it does. I would think that having those folks in the meeting, again, I stand by my attempt earlier to bring in these folks to get that clarity and move away from, well, and I'm not pointing out to anybody's statement, but phrases like "my understanding," "I believe," let's all hear the same thing at the same time.
Any questions or clarification from Mr. Costin?
Madam Chair, John, you, I'm sorry, you asked for, okay. Madam Chair, the, I think, Mr. Costin, so, we don't want to do anything to wedge any indifference between our towns. I mean, you know, we've been blessed to have three good towns in our county. I don't know, is this so important? Do we, should we just have a whole nother meeting and let VDOT come and all board members? I mean, it would be an extra meeting, let me, maybe I shouldn't call that, call it a work session, and assure we all hear the same thing, because I feel like we may need some legal expertise at that meeting as well, at that work session. I mean, that's just a thought, but I agree with Mr. Costin is saying. I think we set it table one more time, you know, just to get it straight, because, you know, all of us can go back, way back, you know? And, I mean, it's always been Crewe-Burkeville to me. I played Crewe-Burkeville All-Stars, you know what I'm saying? It's just always been. And I don't, I hate it to see this wedge in between us. But, we got to look out for the best people who we represent. And Mr. Vaughn gets to me all the time. He says, "Steve, you represent people down in Blackstone too, you just don't realize it." And I try to stick with that. And that's just a thought, unopened for discussion, that's all.
So, did you have any questions before?
Oh, I thought he was going to say something here.
No, that didn't, no, no, sorry. Thank you, John.
The, Madam Chair, there is obviously, in my eyes, some clarity. Reason to believe about the water source down in Blackstone will cause panic, and you can't unring that bell. And, I mean, without anything, with any testing, with any proof. I made a statement before that someone was creeping around creating division. I think I know where it's coming from now. It's sort of like two cats playing in a sandbox, and you turn your back, and the one that's visiting leaves something for them, don't cover it up. And I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate it at all. Somebody stepping into this county, possibly taking funds out of this county, don't appreciate it at all. I'm fine with what Mr. Bowen said as well. If all the elected members want to get together for a work session, let's do it. Get everything out on the table, everybody's voice out. But also, if that's not plausible, I'm willing to volunteer to settle on that committee as well.
I'm sure it'll have to be advertised, right, Ted? Because, yeah.
If you all, so it's a work session with a committee of the whole type of situation, yes, we'd have to advertise, and the towns would have to as well if they take the same approach. Can I say something else?
If we can't, at that point, when we have a committee, then we'll go with your recommendation.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
When we meet as a committee, in a work session, if we cannot come to some kind of conclusion at that point, then we'll go with your recommendations.
Understood.
And bring in the other people, yes.
But now, you're, again, the work session, you'd have to bring the item back onto a meeting agenda to take action.
That's right.
The problem with that is, of my own suggestion, my problem is, are we, you know, I got to say it like it is, are we going to get the truth out of VDOT and the DGS and whatever? Are we going?
Good point.
I know, I, you know, I don't know, I just feel like sometimes, I feel like we're living in a society where we're always digging for the truth, and it's just not freely given anymore. And that bothers me, and it's hard to make a good, sound decision without the truth.
Well, I feel that we should, I know some of the council people from, members from Crewe have asked for just to have a seat at the table and have the discussion with everybody. So, I would agree with you to do what you said, and John, I agree with you, to do that. And then, we'll probably have to come back again and have the discussion all over again.
We have to, sooner or later, we have to make a vote.
Do we have to have a public hearing for this board before we can physically take action?
Yes, yes.
So, it would be, so it would be a meeting, then a public hearing, then we could take action? Okay.
So?
I think that the meeting would be to get the clarity, determine where the lines are, because you have to go to that public hearing. People have to know, hey, am I in or am I out?
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Costin gave us, no, I'm not calling, two alternative motions for tonight. One, that a delegation from the board, a three-person, the town of Crewe, the town of Burkeville, and representatives from Department of General Services and Department of Transportation meet to exchange information, explore options, or the board not support the boundary line adjustment request from either Crewe or Burkeville. You've thrown out the possibility of another option, but I want to clarify, the entire board, and then just certain members from the towns, or are you looking at?
No, 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 we just, no, just, we're going to stick with, the towns can send their own representatives, but not the whole council. Okay? And then, a legal, we have, so when we have legal questions, like, can they really count, here's one, can they really count Department of Corrections? Can't count them in redistricting, so I just want to make sure, we get all these, we are totally factual, so we make a collaborative decision.
All right, so how do you want to frame that motion?
I knew you were going to put me on the spot here. I move that the entire board of supervisors with the county administrator meet together with three representatives of the town of Crewe, three representatives of the town of Burkeville, to explore options, exchange information relative to the boundary line adjustment request of both towns, and that the meeting include a representative from both Virginia Department of General Services, the Virginia Department of Transportation, and Nottaway County's lawyer, loyal firm, or how you want to say it.
I second that motion.
Hold on.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or additional consideration?
I hear some comments from the council that communicate.
So, I'll step aside as the middleman.
Just a point of clarification on your motion, council member. Board of Supervisor, I've been a lot of town councils recently.
I understand, we all right, we good.
Board Member Bowen, with respect to the three-member representatives from each of the towns, you might want to clarify whether you're speaking of two elected council members and one staff member, because otherwise, three members of them meeting together, even with the board, is a meeting of those towns.
I understand, so, so I got you. So, when they go three, it's just like when we go three. Okay. So, thank you, ma'am. So, I'd like to amend that motion with two elected official and one staff member from each town, the town of Crewe and the town of Burkeville. Got that right? So, I'd like to amend that motion, I don't know who seconded my original motion.
I second your original, Lynn.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
I do have a quick question. Since we have Crewe and Burkeville here, are y'all okay with those standards?
They cannot make a decision for us.
And that's what you're asking.
I didn't understand the question.
No, I'm saying, are they okay with what we're doing, the two towns? I mean, we're doing this for them. Are they okay with only sending two, or do they want to send one? Do they want to send all?
When they gave it to us, it went out of their hands and put it into our hands.
We're basically extending the invitation through this, right?
I feel like we extended the invitation, I'm trying to, anyway, that's, anyway. But, you know, let's go ahead, but, you know, and I see what you're trying to do, John, but my motion's on the floor, I'm going to stick with it. And I'm not going to make everybody happy, and I found out in this position, when you don't make everybody happy, you're doing your job.
And you aren't going to make everyone happy, there's no way.
All right, any more discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate with aye.
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 Any opposed, please respond with nay. All right, the motion passes.
Next Thursday, we'll bring you some board from Blackstone.
All right, so we're moving on to new business.
Madam Chair, remind me that we added, under unfinished business, we added number five, redistricting committee appointment. I think most people know the board of supervisors is sitting as the redistricting committee along with four ex officio members. One of those members representing the Republican Party has had to step away from the task. Mr. Outlaw, who is the chairman of the local Republican Party, he had suggested that person. Now, he himself is asking to be the replacement appointee. So, the staff will recommend that you accept the resignation of Ms. Tyler Scott. In her place, put in Mr. Bill Outlaw.
Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Bill Outlaw as an ex officio member of our redistricting committee?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion?
Yes.
That's including accept the resignation.
And accept the resignation.
Accept the resignation of Ms. Scott. Do we have a motion?
I have some.
Second, okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now we'll move on to new business. Mr. Costin, you going to speak to us about Epps Landing subdivision?
Yes, ma'am. This is a subdivision, the plat for which is presented before you, but you also have in your packets a photograph of the subdivision. It has gone to the planning commission. It was reviewed and approved by the planning commission with, if I recall correctly, about nine corrections, changes. Those have been made, but for two, there's an incomplete address, and there's an incomplete notation regarding a lot line vacation. But those are relatively insignificant and can be fixed. Your ordinance gives you the option to go to public hearing for a subdivision review. In that subdivision reviews are administrative. In other words, if all the technical criteria is met, you have no real reason to deny the subdivision. Staff first would recommend that you not go to subdivision public hearing, and then in this particular case, that you accept the plat as you see before you with two changes. And I apologize, the motion failed to include the date. The date is April the 1st, 2021. That is the date of the plat.
You said April 1?
April 1, yes, sir. 2021 is the date on the plat. Be happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Costin?
I say for fools, Dan, you sure this is legit?
Absolutely.
All right, do we have a motion that based upon staff's review, the final plat for Epps Landing subdivision dated April 1, 2021, is in substantial compliance with county ordinances? Therefore, we approve the plat with the two corrections noted by staff and subject to appropriate execution by all parties.
So, move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. All right, Mr. Costin, we'll move on to the emergency declarations.
Yes, ma'am, plural. As you, someone noted, Mr. Hyde has been busy. We have had three declarations of emergency. Remind the public that the board has set the guidance that if any state of emergency is declared by the governor, that has the potential to affect Nottaway County, that the Nottaway County Emergency Management Director, that's the chairman of the board, will declare an emergency. State law requires that each of those be ratified by the full board within 30 days of the declaration or at the earliest meeting. So, you have before you three declarations for the different snow events, and we ask that you go ahead and combine them all into one motion, although they're three separate resolutions, three separate declarations. Just go ahead and do it in one motion to cover all three. Be happy to take any questions you have.
I'll move, Madam Chair.
All right, so we have a motion to adopt resolutions ratifying three weather-related declarations of emergency, January 3rd, January 16th, and January 20th. Is there a second?
You second, can't second that quick enough, as long as it ain't ice.
All in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, and the resolutions are adopted. All right, next on the agenda, consent items. Ms. Tomer, will you speak to those?
There are seven items on the January consent agenda. You have the December operational expenses for all county funds. You have a request for refund of a building permit fee in the amount of $66.40. The permit was obtained by the contractor, the owner didn't move forward with the project. There's erroneous assessment in the amount of $239.59 for a personal property assessment that the property owner has asked that that refund be applied to their 2021 other personal property tax accounts. There is an erroneous assessment refund in the amount of $117.25, another personal property assessment for tax years 2021 and 2020. There's a budget adjustment for the sheriff in the amount of $1,006.46. This is VA Corp. insurance proceeds for a damaged sheriff's vehicle. There's a budget adjustment for emergency services. There's actually two. You have one from fire programs, the aid to localities, in the amount of $38,346. That will be equally distributed to the three volunteer fire departments. And you have the 21 Department of Health Office of EMS, four for life funding, negotiate emergency services, in the amount of $12,672.40, and that will be distributed between Nottaway Emergency Squad and Burkeville Rescue.
Any questions or clarification from Ms. Tomer? Do we have a motion to approve the consent items as presented?
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate with aye.
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 Opposed? The motion passes, consent items are approved. Next on the agenda, correspondence information items. Included in your package is an update from Commonwealth Regional Council. Any questions or comments about this update? Mr. Coniston, ready for the county administrator report?
Yes ma'am, just flipping through the memo to the board that's contained in the packet, I think we've addressed the emergency management situation. We have also begun the employee recognition program this evening, and I thank you for your support with that. As noted, we're still continuing to work on the redistricting issues. I participated in a roundtable discussion with Representative Spamberger, and I took a moment during that to thank her staff for engaging in yet another Operation Welcome Allies issue that had some potential negative consequences on, on local resources. We had a situation brought to my attention by the Commonwealth's Attorney, involved the sheriff, involved social services, basically spent New Year's weekend holding our breath and hope, fortunately, the, the event that we were concerned about did not happen. But once again, it was a reminder to our federal partners that what they decide to do does impact locally. Ms. Tomer and I continue to work on the budget. And again, I look forward to Mr. Zodi's arrival and take some of the daily routine of zoning and permit approval off my desk. I am happy to report that Monday night, the barn on the Pulley property was, was brought down, thanks to the Blackstone Volunteer Fire Department. They will, are going to use the Pulley house itself for some training. We may be able to burn down part of that and reduce the debris that goes to the landfill. We may not be able to do that due to the proximity of transformers. Mr. Hyde is working with the power company to make that determination. But we are beginning to, to clear off that portion, that, that piece of property. I will note that the board, the majority of the board will be attending the VACO Legislative Day, and then the chair and vice chair and myself are also going to attend two days of training sponsored by VACO in Richmond. As I noted earlier, it's been about twelve days since this memo was written. We've had some other things going on. I'd like to address two things. One, and Mr. Bowen has already alluded to this, the journal assembly's in session. And so periodically, we're getting alerts and requests to comment on bills and share those comments with our legislators. And we are doing exactly that. We've responded to an inquiry as to whether or not this county has exercised some of the authority to restrict open or concealed carry in its buildings. We have also responded to some legislation that will remove, well, that will classify rehabilitation group homes as single-family residences, which means if you have a, your zoning ordinance allows for single-family residences, then it has to allow group homes. And there are a variety of group homes that completely takes away some land use authority from the locality, but it also completely takes away citizen input into the process of whether or not that house, group home is cited. Okay. If you'll recall back from the organizational meeting, I, I gave you a glimpse of what you heard tonight from our auditors, that we're in financially, we're in great shape with the caveat of the landfill. I have, with Mr. Easter and Ms. Presley, worked up some proposed amendments to the solid waste policies that Notaway County has, and those include adjustments in fees, and I'll pass these out in just a moment. But basically, we need to start doing something to fix the landfill financially. Well, all the, the solid waste program financially. Some of these, what I've proposed here are some updates, and yes, there are fee increases. Yes, there are.
Too much, no.
Yes, there are reductions in service hours at the landfill, and these are all proposals. And yes, there are some cost savings to be achieved by making some administrative changes. One of those, I think, became very public here one night, a bill for seventy-five cents, when, you know, by the time we processed that bill and the time we mailed that bill, we've spent more than seventy-five cents. So we've made, we're looking at making some process adjustments in what it is that we bill, and what we don't bill for. So I'm not asking for, obviously, I'm not asking for action on this tonight, because you haven't seen it, but I will suggest you take the next month, look at this, and have it considered on your agenda for next month to determine whether or not you want to go forward with a public hearing on an adjusted fee schedule, which would be in March. And I put it off on that schedule, because I'll remind the board, I will not be here at your February meeting. Ms. Tomer will, will have the helm. So if I may.
Thank you, sir.
With that, Madam Chairman, that concludes my report. Be happy to take any questions that the board may have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Coniston? All right, so.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make, this is not a question, Mr. Coniston, if you don't mind, I'd like to point a procedure for the board to consider, if you don't mind. Thank you. You know, you started, you, you, you set the tone for the meeting, and I was, and I want to thank you for that. And what you did was, you thanked the citizens being here. And I think it's amazing that, you know, we, we actually are taping, you know, the, the meetings, but yet, more people are coming to the meetings. And it, and it's, and I realize, it's not, it's not all, it's not, it's not about us, it's, it's that they want to hear their voices. They, we want, they want us to hear their voices, okay? So, and as you see, as time goes on during the meeting, you, you lose, I, I feel like sometimes, when people come up here and they speak to us, and we, we're here to listen, but they don't hear us say anything back, you know? And, 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 and we shouldn't while the delegation's a public. We need to be listening. What I would like the board to consider in the future, because we, we've already approved the agenda, when we go into closed session, when we have closed session on the agenda, could we do our comments before we go into closed session? Just, just a thought, because, I mean, you know, we may be back an hour, they're not gonna stick, these people got a workful living, they're gonna go home. You know, and I don't blame them, okay? And we, and, because sometimes we come up, we go back an hour, we take no action, you know? And so, but I, I, I just feel like we need to do that, so when we do go in closed session, when we make our comments with each other, they know that, hey, you know, we heard, I was gonna use, like Ms. Hines tonight, whoever, whoever we want to talk about. And then what we're, and what we're doing in the community and what we, you know, so they know that it's, you know, with, because sometimes, you know, you sit up there and you, I get it, you speak, I don't know, maybe it's made a difference since I got closer here, and I'm not where, I don't know. But you speak, and then they go over and sit down, and I, and I'm sure they're going, well, that, that's, that, that group didn't hear anything I had to say, you know? But anyway, but I, but I, but I do love it, that citizens are in here. I, I, I like it, standing room only. That's what they elect us for, and I'd say.
I think that's a, a good point. Is it something we could consider?
I like it, because it also, our staff has had difficulties, not our staff, but with the IT services, and like, when we go in and come out, it's not that our staff-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, our staff has made no mistakes.
Right.
Let's make that clear.
Right.
But theirs has been some communications that come out, because once you, I, I may not have this right, but once you stop it, they want you to restart it, and they're awful on their end and stuff like that. So it just, it makes it a whole lot easier for our staff, and the public doesn't assume that our staff has made a mistake, because it's the IT problem, it's not our staff.
Does that cause any problem for staff, as far as things in order there?
Make it a little bit simpler, wouldn't it?
Actually, I was just checking your rules. The rules do not, that they give you your, your order of your business, and there is no insertion for a closed session. So we probably should go back and amend the rules, but actually, the rule, the way the order is presented is, you should move to, from the county administrators' report, you should move to the, the board reports, board, board comments. So it's, what you're proposing is right, right in line with-
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Coniston.
And I apologize, we've just been following the agenda-
We've been doing it for years, right, right.
We've been doing it for years, just following that agenda format. But we'll, we can fix it for February, and if you, I, I, I leave it to you all if you all want to, you've already set your agenda for this meeting, if you want to start in February.
February.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go with the switch, absolutely, yes ma'am.
Okay. All right.
So now we need a motion to go into closed session. Ms. Simmons, could you provide the motion for us?
Yes ma'am. To enter closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-371188, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically a 2014 contract entered into upon receipt of a state AFID grant.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
You got it.
We have a motion and a second to enter closed session. All in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
The board will now enter closed session.
Move it on.
What time is it? We have the conference call more than a minute.
Nine o'clock.
And you're, do we meet over here, or? Okay, you're just, you're just right around the side.
Will you look at the complex?
Yeah, you're on the phone.
Where the fall left.
Gotcha.
We're next to the cow field.
Hey, good meeting you, I really, I didn't overstep myself.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
I just get really...
Mr. Rourke, will you make a motion calling for certification of closed session?
Yes, ma'am. Where it's not a county, where it's not a county. Where it's not a county, the board of supervisors had convened an executive meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.1-344.1 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this board of supervisors that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that notary county board of supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board of supervisors, and three, no action was taken in the executive meeting regarding the items discussed.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second calling for certification of tonight's closed session. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for certification passes. Mr. Costin, will you poll the board?
Yes, it has to be a roll call.
That's a roll call.
Okay, so as clerk, I'll ask if each member certifies to the, to the motion. Ms. Simmons, do you say certify?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman Shackleton?
Yes.
It's five certifications, no extensions. Go nays.
Okay. I'll now entertain a motion to authorize the county administrator to repay to the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services the amount of $49,333.32 due to the failure of Trout River Dry Kill LLC to satisfy the conditions of a grant from that agency provided to the county for Trout River and to pursue all reasonable remedies for recovery.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for certification passes. Mr. Costin, will you poll the board?
Yes, it has to be a roll call.
That's a roll call.
Okay, so as clerk, I'll ask if each member certifies to the, to the motion. Ms. Simmons, do you say certify?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman Shackleton?
Yes.
It's five certifications, no extensions. Go nays.
Okay. I'll now entertain a motion to authorize the county administrator to repay to the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services the amount of $49,333.32 due to the failure of Trout River Dry Kill LLC to satisfy the conditions of a grant from that agency provided to the county for Trout River and to pursue all reasonable remedies for recovery.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Any closing comments tonight, Ms. Simmons?
Just that we have on the Crossroads Board, we have interviewed for executive director, and we should be making an announcement very soon.
Okay.
Good.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Bowen?
It's just a point of clarification, boy. So I think, I wrote her name down. I hope I wrote it down right. It's hard to read when you write like a doctor. You can't even read your writing. So Ms. Linda Hines, I think that's the one, the lady who spoke about, about the water line? Is that right? So she mentioned that we had a public hearing on that water line, and I don't recall a public hearing. Is this the same water line that we've had citizens come to us and talk to us about before?
Mr. Bowen?
It's the same.
Okay.
I met with them when Mr. Anzavino was here.
Okay.
I met with them. It was a group of people that I met with. I had done a survey. We had done a survey. And the survey, half the people wanted the line and half the people didn't want the line. So consequently, we didn't do any action at that time. But since then, I have asked Mr. Costin to contact the Department of Health. And so they are going to come in, and then we'll deal with it after that.
Okay. And because I know if it was some...
The public hearing was not at this courthouse. It was at the town office in Blackstone.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. That's what kind of confused me.
Only the people who live on Cox Road.
I got you. So we're looking at the Virginia Department of Health to reach out with them or whatever?
Yeah. And when I, when I deal with it, I'm going to deal with it with facts.
So their well water is bad. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, but if you live on the outskirts of town, say John, John lives on McCoon Road. He has a well. And if his well goes dry, then John is going to have to dig deeper or dig out a different place.
Wow.
But the town is so close. I don't live in town, but I have town water.
Right.
So it's down my road. It has been there, you know, for a long, long time. And there are many roads in and around Blackstone that's not in town, but the town's...
So you don't live in town, actually?
No.
You don't live in the town limits of Blackstone?
No, I live across the street from my city slick friends.
Right, right. I got you. But you, you're all on town water?
Yes.
Okay.
Was there an issue within this situation that because of the size of the lots and then the requirements that septic, but the distance between septic and wells, that they didn't have room for new wells? Was that part of the issue?
That's never been an issue. That's never been an issue.
Yeah, and the reason...
People, the first time we did...
This meeting will now reconvene in open session. Mr. Rourke, will you make a motion calling for certification of closed session?
Yes, ma'am. Where it's not a county board of supervisors has had convened an executive meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where as 2.1-344.1 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board supervisors that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that Nottaway County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board supervisors. And three, no action was taken in the executive meeting regarding the items discussed.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second calling for certification of tonight's closed session. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for certification passes. Mr. Costin, will you poll the board?
Yes, it has to be a roll call.
That's for roll call.
Okay, so as clerk, I'll ask if each member certifies to the motion. Ms. Simmons, do you say certify?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bowlin?
Yes.
Chairman Shackleton?
Yes.
It's five certifications, no extensions, no names.
I'll now entertain a motion to authorize the county administrator to repay to the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services the amount of $49,333.32 due to the failure of Trout River Dry Kill LLC to satisfy the conditions of a grant from that agency provided to the county for Trout River and to pursue all reasonable remedies for recovery.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Any closing comments tonight, Ms. Simmons?
Just that we have on the Crossroads Board, we have interviewed for executive director, and we should be making an announcement very soon.
Okay.
Good.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Bowlin?
It's just a point of clarification, boy. So I think I wrote her name down. I hope I wrote it down right. It's hard to read when you write like a doctor, you can't even read your writing. So Ms. Linda Hines, I think that's the lady who spoke about the water line. Is that right? So she mentioned that we had a public hearing on that water line, and I don't recall a public hearing. Is this the same water line that we've had citizens come to us and talk to us about before?
Mr. Bowlin?
It's the same.
Okay. I met with them when Mr. Anzavino was here. I met with them. It was a group of people that I met with. I had done a survey, we had done a survey, and the survey, half the people wanted the line and half the people didn't want the line. So consequently, we didn't do any action at that time. But since then, I have asked Mr. Costin to contact the Department of Health, and so they are going to come in, and then we'll deal with it after that.
Okay. And because I know if it was some-
The public hearing was not at this courthouse, it was at the town office in Black-
Oh, okay, okay, all right. That's what kind of confused me.
Only the people who live on Cox Road.
I got you. So looking at Virginia Department of Health to reach out with them or whatever.
Yeah, and when I deal with it, I'm gonna deal with it with facts.
So their well water is bad, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, but if you live on the outskirts of town, say John, John lives on McCoon Road, he has a well. And if his well goes dry, then John is gonna have to dig deeper or dig out a different place.
Uh-huh.
But the town is so close, I don't live in town, but I have town water.
Right.
So it's down my road, and it's been there, you know, for a long, long time. And there are many roads in and around Blackstone that's not in town, but-
So you don't live in town, actually. You don't live in the town limits of Blackstone?
I live across the street from my city slick friends.
Right, right, I got you. But you're all on town water?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, was there an issue within this situation that because of the size of the lots and then the requirements that septic, but the distance between septic and wells, that they didn't have room for new wells? Was that part of the issue?
That's never been an issue. That's never been an issue.
Yeah, and the reason-
The first time we did this, the issue was they didn't want to pay for town water when their wells were going dry. And that's the same issue now. Half the folks don't want to pay. And it's not a racial issue, it's just an issue that they don't want to pay the town for the water.
Because once the water line goes down there, everybody has to hook up.
Everybody has to hook up.
Okay, okay.
That's the issue. Everyone has to hook up.
And the reason why I asked, and I didn't know how deep the issue was, Madam Chair, I was trying to think, have we ever set, have we set precedents? And I know at one time, there was a child that got hurt over in Blackstone, and we, they didn't have a sidewalk to walk on, and I think we extended the sidewalk and paid for that part, so, and it went into the town. So, because we all, I do want to, I do have a certain, like the safety and welfare of our citizens. And then in District One, we had that housing developed, that housing project where we did get grant money to fix people's bathrooms and put, and I didn't know if we could look for grant money through Virginia Department of Health or whoever to help with a project there. But you're bringing up a whole different issue, Mr. Vaughn, that I didn't realize about everybody has to go on it. But wouldn't it be kind of rough if you don't have water? You know, that's-
It is, and I think the health department is going to tell us that this is so.
Okay.
But I just can't arbitrarily decide that I'm going to ask you all to run that line, and then half the people don't want the line.
Right.
I have to have facts to say we need the line.
Do we know the cost of that? Has anybody had got a cost?
No cost to the county, right? It's just a matter of-
1.4 million was the cost of the line, but as Mr. Bowlin said, we want to run the line, we want to help these folks.
So the town's going to do that?
But I don't blame them for not, you know, some folks don't want a water bill. We can't run the line and just say we love everybody, you decide whether you want to hook up or not. Once we run the line, it's got to be mandatory connections. But also economically, beltwise, Cox Road goes out to 460, it would make a lot of sense, but I certainly understand Mr. Vaughn not wanting to, you know, there's some low-income folks out there that are struggling as it is.
Right, I got you.
But the price, about three years ago, I believe it was 1.4 million. I hate to use the word "I believe" again, but that's my reputation.
The line is going to eventually come there too, because Blackstone is growing that way. Blackstone is not growing down Northwest Avenue, it's growing down Cox Road.
Okay.
Mr. Vaughn, is there a timeline for that meeting that you're talking about for Cox Road, and is there a timeline to get to a public hearing, like a month? Like, would it be like March or April or next?
I'm not going to set a timeline. If it doesn't, if it's not done in that time that you're talking about, in a month, then you really would make people mad.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Tell them what we have done, Mr. Costin.
I have reached out to the district health director and had a conversation with him. We're looking for some dates that we can schedule this. We're in a busy season between budget and now potentially a boundary line adjustment meeting, that's another meeting. But I'm waiting to hear back from her with some dates that she would be available along with her staff, her key staff for this. This is above the local sanitarian. This is going to be, you know, water line engineering and, you know, that sort of thing. So trying to pull that team together, get some dates that they can hold, and then come back to Mr. Vaughn with some dates. And I would caution the use of the phrase "public hearing," I think it's more of a community meeting than it is a public hearing.
Do you know what to expect, what type of data and research to gather with that meeting with them?
I think what I would be asking for is how many well failures have they had? How many dry well reports have they had? How many septic tank failures do they have? Because again, if you're going, we're always on water, but if somebody has a septic tank failure, and they've got to put in a new septic tank and drain field, that's got to be so many feet from not only their well, but their neighbor's wells.
Right.
So there's a lot of information there that would have to be, that would have to be looked at.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for letting me speak freely. And Mr. Vaughn, no offense to you, I just want to get educated on it, and I won't part of that meeting that they had, and I apologize for that. But, you know, when she said it was a public hearing, I went, I missed that one. I don't, you know, it kind of shocked me.
It was only a public hearing for the people from down there-
I got you.
On that road.
Okay.
I hadn't invited them there. I had sent out a survey, and then I invited them to the meeting so I could go over the survey and send the other.
No further comment, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, for that clarification as well. I have some questions about that. And speaking to what some of the, Ms. Kit, Ms. Johnson was talking about, as you all aware of what transpired to the news stations over at the school, I wanted to reiterate one clear fact. Nottaway County Sheriff's Department and their school resource officers absolutely unquestionably done their job. I stand and applaud them, and in no way, shape, or form did they have any lack of transparency, any lack of investigation or anything into that issue. And I, really, I wish for a simpler time when Mr. Vaughn was principal, back when there was discipline, back when there was accountability. If I could turn back the clock, sir, I'd go back to late 80s, early 90s and have the school system rocking like you did.
I have four students in here. Will you raise your hand, please? Aye.
Got five.
Six. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I did want to just mention that I had been contacted by residents of Coal Harbor Subdivision about the condition of the roads within the subdivision. Really, I did speak to town manager of Blackstone, as I understand, that the subdivision resides outside of the town limits, although the town provides utilities to the subdivision. VDOT is not willing to take it into the system. The county apparently years ago authorized this, I mean, maybe it was a zoning exception at the time when that subdivision was built, that it would be a private road. And I think, Mr. Costin, you reached out to Diana at VDOT, and they don't really, they can't take that into the system as they-
They can't take the road into the system the way it is now. I understand part of the problem is some of the utilities are actually in the roadway and not outside the roadway.
Yes.
That's a complicating factor.
Or underneath the roadway, right, yeah.
Diana and I, we have a quarterly meeting, in our next quarterly meeting, we're going to drive out there and take a look at it.
Great.
But they already, they have a file, this is not the first time it's been raised, they have an existing file on it, she's going to bring that in, show me the communications, the correspondences, but basically, it's, you buy into a private road subdivision, you buy into a private road subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
So regardless of whatever it is, mind, and guess what? They want us to adjust our boundaries, so maybe we have three boundaries just to make it sound town is, town is torn on that, and we're thinking about it.
Okay.
Because once you do adjust that boundary, you're responsible for the road, right?
We gotta pick up the leaves, pick up, police have to go in there for getting some blue land.
The problem then, the problem is-
And we lose the water to the truck. Right now, we're paying, they're paying 50% back for the water.
Right, I got you.
That's right.
Any comments from county administration office? All right, does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
So did Katie start working when she was 16 years old here? Where is she? I figured out. You weren't even allowed to drink. Oh, I could turn my mic off.